Let's call the City of Milton Common Council virtual meeting to order on Tuesday, March 16th, and we're still at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody in our waiting room or on our Zoom meeting?
There is no one in the waiting room, and I'm not seeing anyone else besides staff and elected officials.
All right, then. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
We did skip allegiance, just so you know.
Oh, we did. Oh, sorry. Pledge of allegiance. You have to be off mute.
I'm off now.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sorry, I apologize for skipping that. Okay, so now we can approve the consent agenda.
Don't move.
And a second by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, all right, we've done one, two, three, four, and five. Six, discussion and possible action regarding an engineering proposal for reconditioning services for the West Water Tower.
This is for, this is for the rehabilitation of the West Water Tower, which is the silver four-legged tower in town. This tower rehabilitation is planned for year 2023 based on the recently approved capital improvement plan. In discussions with the designer KLM Engineering, there may be an opportunity for some cost savings to bid it out over, or for construction in two different construction seasons, one being 2022, which would be next year, or 2023. I could do that if the construction, or if the bids do show us savings in 2022, we would love to use cash on hand to fund water tower rehabilitation and then replenish the cash in the 2023 with the funds that we had originally allotted for the water tower. There's a engineering agreement from KLM with the proposed scope of work and the engineering fee for the work. If there's any questions, gladly try to answer them.
I have a question.
Sure.
All right, let's start with Larry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mark, in terms of rehabbing then the tower, is there an idea of how long then that benefits or before you really have to look at doing some of that work again? I mean, you may not know, but is there?
So with this type of a rehab, we'd be looking to do any work that would be needed to bring the tower into conformance with current DNR requirements, OSHA requirements, and then replace all of the coatings, interior and exterior. The coatings last, you know, approximately 20 years, but some last a lot longer. So I guess that's hopefully answers your question.
Yeah, it is. Yep, I was just curious how long one could expect.
There could be a regulation change down the road that would need some required modifications to the tower, but as far as a major improvement like this, it would, it's probably around 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
I think the last coating of the tower was 1996, too, for reference, so that's 20, going on 25 years.
Yeah.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Linda? We're on the water tower. You're on mute. You're still on mute.
Okay, sorry. The only question that I had is long-term maintenance on these kinds of towers. What are we doing for the, what do we do for the weatherization of these? And I'm just thinking of like the condition of the tower on the other side. Is there something special that we're doing, like to prevent the mold and that kind of thing?
There are contractors that, you know, you could have come and clean the towers, wash the towers. Some of the paint products have changed as technologies improve, but as far as maintenance, like East Tower would be washing, cleaning. You could do that, you know, whenever we wanted, really.
Okay, that's my only question.
Um, who's left? Ryan?
Yep, I have no questions.
Did I miss anybody? Teresa, any questions or comments?
Just the way you stated it, you were just kind of estimating how much money you would have on hand and that you'd be able to cover it as the time goes on?
Yeah, Dan can chime in if needed, but yeah, we've got cash on hand that could fund the project.
Okay.
Then we would replenish the cash on hand in the year the tower would have been scheduled 2023 using those planned elements.
All right, thank you.
And we'll see what the bids come back at. I mean, it may still stay on the 2023 schedule. Realize some cost savings if possible.
So what, you're just gonna go out for bids? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so this, this work order or this motion would be to approve award the proposal for reconditioning services and the warranty inspection for the West Tower to KLM Engineering for not to exceed fee of $61,821. That prepares the engineering plans for permitting with the DNR, bidding with the contractors, and also provides construction services for them to climb the tower, do the inspection of the paint prep, the painting work, welding. KLM has staff on hand who can do, you know, NACE certified coating inspectors, welding inspectors. So that's kind of a full package for the engineering work for the tower.
So, Linda, go ahead.
My question now is, what about if we have, if there's any leasing on that tower then? Are those people contacted or how is that handled?
Yeah, Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to provide notice to the tenants on the tower, I think 45 days in advance of the tower rehabilitation. And then they are responsible for costs above and beyond the normal rehabilitation that result from their use of the tower.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? So what if you, so there's no way that we'd have to duplicate the work that we're doing now if the bids come in higher and we have to wait till 2023? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. We would bid it with two completion dates. There would be one bid for a 2022 completion date and one bid for a 2023 completion date. So if the 2023 completion date bid came in lower, it would just sit for a year until that time, which the work would then begin. So it wouldn't be, it's not as if we're gonna have to redesign and rebid in the meantime.
And where is the cash coming from?
The water utility.
And would this impair any other projects we have upcoming or may need to do? Okay, any other questions from anybody? Is there a motion? Okay, I guess we'll be done with this. Thanks.
Okay. I'm moved to award the proposal for reconditioning services and warranty inspection for the West Tower to KLM Engineering for an amount not to exceed the of $61,821.
Second.
Right, did you second that first? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
I'm sorry, just quick, Anissa, did you give that to Ryan or to Linda?
I gave it to Ryan.
Okay.
All right, review of February financial statements.
Austin, overly exotic here. We're only two months into the year, so really hard to project anything. Guess if people have questions. Just working on your end stuff right now, so.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope, good.
Larry?
No questions, thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Bill?
None.
Teresa?
No.
Linda?
No questions.
Okay. All right, so everybody ready? We're on number eight, correct? All right, discussion, direction, and possible action regarding the Milton Joint Fire Department. Who would like to go first? Does anybody have anything they would like to say, staff or council?
I have a lot to say.
Okay, do we, do we want a time limit on this? Say 60 minutes?
Per person or as an item?
Well, let's, let's shoot for 60 minutes and we can always go longer if we need to on this one. I got, I got a lot of water, a lot of water. Bill, it looks like you were ready to go.
Well, I guess the first thing I want to say out of the gate is that I believe that the point at which we decided to talk with Janesville was the point where we decided we needed to have a full-time department. That the discussion was really based around the fact that the on-call model wasn't going to work and was only going to create more difficulty in the future and that what we were looking at was two full-time models, one being consolidation with Janesville and the other being a standalone Milton, Milton Township full-time department. I believe the reason that Edgerton never entered into the picture was due to the fact that it is not a full-time department and that any possible merger with Edgerton simply takes two weak partners and makes one larger weak partner. And consequently, the actions of the town to essentially undermine the discussions with Janesville really seem to be completely uncalled for. And I think our discussion really needs to be whether or not we feel that we need to move forward with a city of Milton, Janesville, kind of a consolidation separate from a township-city partnership that has existed for a long period of time. And, you know, I guess that's my summary. I don't want to get into the other stuff about, you know, when we're meeting and live meeting and all that kind of stuff. I think that's just additional noise that comes into play here. I think the crux of the matter is whether or not we want a full-time department, whether we think that that's necessary. If so, the Edgerton option is not a real option and we need to decide what we're gonna do in a unilateral fashion. I do believe that would be the city doing that work as opposed to the fire commission, so be the city as a whole entering into those discussions with Janesville as opposed to it being an action of the fire commission.
Lisa?
Yes, to follow up with one thing that Bill said, Brian and I actually started meeting as a representative of the fire commission as a subcommittee with the fire representatives. Must have been the summer before you became a part of the fire commission, Bill. And the fire representatives asked to meet with representatives from Edgerton. They were interested in finding out what that would entail, joining with Edgerton. And so they did. It wasn't any type of commitment with them, but at that time, it was decided actually by the firemen that they had no interest in, in working together at that time. Edgerton just wasn't suited to work together in form of any type of a partnership. So that had been sought out actually even before Ernie became the chief of the fire commission or whatever. So that was looked at once before now. I'm not sure exactly what has changed, but anyway, it had been reviewed before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to answer this question.
Linda?
Um, I am, I'm not gonna lie. I was very, I have been very disappointed with some of the actions of the town board with regards to the fire department and the fire commission in general. I am not, I, it's okay for them to go to Edgerton if they feel like they need to do a partnership. You know, for some of their areas, that really kind of makes sense. And I think that that's probably why it was brought up in the past, but then as Teresa stated, there was no interest. If, as long as we continue with our relationship with the town board, I feel like it's important to keep moving ahead. We've, they, they know what the plans are for the department. They know what we've been working towards. And I believe that they have to look out for their people just as much as we have to look out for ours. I'm not gonna fault them for what they've done, but I will fault them for how they did it and how they have treated us. I, for one, am very upset about a meeting that turned into a closed session. Shouldn't have happened. And that in itself tells me that we have got a major communication problem. And I think that if we could just, I, I don't know, it's like, I feel like we were going along so well and then all of a sudden, boom. Everything just kind of got turned around and now everything is going on. We're not getting the information that, that we're requesting and we're not getting the information of as far as what they're thinking with the department. And that makes me sad because the whole purpose of this consolidation is not about the city of Milton. It's not about the township of Milton, about our individual boards and governments of body. It's about the service that we need for the people that we represent. And, you know, if they want to go to Edgerton and make it better for their people, yeah, go right ahead and do it, but, you know, please just work with us through this consolidation. And, you know, I'm also thinking they probably learned a little bit about consolidation with what we have been through the last six years in working on the Janesville consolidation.
You know, it, but Bill raised an important question, and I guess I would ask that of you, Linda, as well as everyone. Is it appropriate to continue working on the consolidation with the commission while at the same time allowing them to continue working on their own idea of perhaps working with Edgerton, Harmony, and all these others? You know, do you continue on both ends or do you just say goodbye?
You say goodbye.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
You know, that's kind of like their conversation, though, that they have to, they have to come to that conclusion. I know what I have to do for my people. I know what's best for the citizens of Milton and I, I thought that the mutual agreements were working out very well for a while, but I can't go backwards with, with these actions.
But does it, does it affect our decision-making and our ability to move forward if we don't know the, I mean monetarily and equipment-wise and all that? Are we, are we set to move forward if we don't know? And, yeah, Bill, I see you're.
Bill, I'm gonna let Larry speak since you've, you've already spoken and then we'll go to Devin and Ryan and then we'll just keep circling back, but Larry?
Well, first of all, in answer to Teresa's point, I liken this to a merger that a company I was working for was involved. They wanted to merge with another company and half the board was in favor of it, the other half was in favor behind the scenes, but then ultimately out in front with merging with another organization. So we had three parties discussing a mergers that were not interested in each other's viewpoints whatsoever. And it became very difficult to carry out negotiations. I, I can, I think in a sense the fire commission has been gutted in terms of authority, because how do you make decisions on a consolidation when one half of the party is not even interested in what the details of that consolidation may be? It doesn't affect them. If they're not part of the consolidation, they have no investment. They have no interest. And so how will you get any voting done or any progress made? So I think it'd be who's the city to move forward with negotiations with Janesville sincere, down, get down to basics, get the negotiations underway. And then at some point, dissolution has to happen.
So I just, I wanna give an update. So we have been negotiating with Janesville. That has been happening. It's been happening with Brian there and with the city of Janesville listening to both what the city of Milton has to say through me and what the town has to say through Brian. So we've been participating in those negotiations and Janesville has said they're willing to continue to negotiate, you know, whatever that looks like. So I'm, just for clarification, I'm assuming you would like to have us research what it would look like if it was just the city of Milton consolidating with the city of Janesville. I just want to make sure I'm clear in understanding what you're talking about when you say proceed with an, like go ahead with negotiates, like we're negotiating. That's our, that, that horse already left the barn.
I know that. I understand, Anissa. I will say this also, very disappointed that the memorandum of understanding got put in the paper before any of us saw it other than the people doing the negotiating. I know it was a request for information, but basically it put everything out on the table and we didn't, we didn't even have a chance as a council or I as an alternate on the fire commission to see that document.
Right, and that document is just, it's a draft and we didn't know that there was a request for, for an open record on that. So the agreement that we had between the city and the town and the city of Janesville was that we weren't gonna release any drafts because they were going to change. And what happened was when the town made a statement to the press, then there was an open records request and that, that was respected. Now, if we, if that wouldn't have been released, then, you know, there's the other thought that, oh, well, they're trying to hide something. So there was no intention to keep any of that from the council. You know, we thought we had agreements and we didn't.
Well, that's another example why we want to move forward. And, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to this. Maybe Mark can answer this for us. When I read through the current memorandum of understanding, there's a 180-day notice that needs to be given with the intent of proceeding with dissolution, but there's no end date for the dissolution. So I would say we want to react sooner rather than later. Doesn't matter how long it takes for dissolution to occur. It's more of the notification. I see no reason. I honestly think I don't see any reason for the fire commission to keep meeting when there will be very little, if nothing, to discuss that the two parties have in common. And then I've said enough. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Thank you. Mark, did you want to? Any comment yet? Mark asked.
Well, just, just to comment and specify regarding the notice that Larry was referencing in the intergovernmental agreement that forms the district, what it provides is, strictly speaking, a 180-day notice, although it can be construed as that, it provides that if you wish to dissolve the district in a particular year, you need to give written notice of that by a certified copy of a resolution by June 30th of that year.
Okay.
So, in other words, you, any, you can give that notice at any time and it can be dissolved, but the, if you wish to have it done in a particular year, it needs to be done by June 30th of that year. So that's what it provides.
Thank you.
And then, as you're correct, it may then be wrapped up within that year or may not be, but at least then you know when the potential end date is. But there's a lot that goes on after you give the notice, so.
So and clearly the town has demonstrated a willingness to dissolve the agreement because if they went, went with Edgerton, that would require them to dissolve the agreement. So I don't necessarily think that they're opposed to it. In fact, I would say they're very willing to dissolve the agreement based on their actions with Edgerton.
I don't know. I think they want their cake and want to eat it, too. You know, I think that they're hoping that what they can do is leverage the discussions with Edgerton to bring in Harmony, for example, and we had, you know, kind of one of the side effects of what they're doing. You know, now we've got a, an article in the newspaper about Harmony, talking about, you know, pulling out. I, I, I think the hope of the town is that eventually there is a Edgerton, Town of Milton, City of Milton, Joint Fire Department. And, you know, that is what isn't acceptable to me because of And um, you know, that is what isn't acceptable to me because of uh, everything that we've heard about the full-time department. Um, the comment I wanted to make earlier was, um, you know, I thought that the Gazette uh, really nailed it in terms of their analogy. Um, the uh, uh, and the framework that we've got right now is uh, what the township is trying to do. Uh, is they're trying to say, oh yeah, we're, we're, we're still planning the wedding date, uh, but by the way, we want to keep on seeing the other woman. Um, and uh, you know, that's the framework that we've got here and that's. Not a uh, situation where we're going to get um, a um, uh, a, a good negotiation out of it. I suppose there is a track that matches Linda's uh, concern and I think that's a real one, I think that um, the. Uh, desire of uh, the city of Milton uh, in believing that we need the full-time department. Uh, and uh, a thought on the part of the town that maybe they can get by with a volunteer department. Um, you know, that's appropriate for the township and for the city to have separate uh, ideas on that issue. Uh, but um, in that framework, um, then it's gotta be very, very clear. That there is a negotiation that's going on on behalf of the commission. That is a negotiation that is about a consolidation with Jamesville, period. Uh, if there then is a separate discussion with the city of Milton. Uh, and the city of Jamesville about a consolidation and a separate one with Edgerton. Uh, you know, I guess that that's a track that could be there, uh, but I think we're weakened considerably. Uh, in the framework of um, uh, what's going on right now.
And I think that we definitely need to move forward, I'm, I'm kind of wondering. I mean, we need to move forward with a full-time department. And I, I see no reason why we should ever go back to the other way of having a department. I think that part of the problem that we're having is the misunderstanding of what the consolidation is by people who basically. Haven't looked into it clearly to see the benefits, not only. To the municipalities for their budgets, but also for the service aspect of this. You know, everyone that is speaking negatively or speaking of keeping a station. Our own Milton station. You know, I, I have to wonder if they've had the opportunity to look at the numbers that we have had to look at. I am kind of concerned about how our towns are going to be affected. Oh, cause their contracts are signed for a year, but our goal date is January twenty-two. And then, um. We're supposed to be working on a referendum. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to, you know, what our priorities is. It will be as far as the timing of all of these things that we're, that we've already talked about. I mean, uh, will we do a referendum? As the city of Milton or will we do a referendum as the town, city, fire department? You know, there's, I feel like we really need to um, make that decision and I also would like to just. Um, Dan, you and I had spoken earlier. Um, I would, we talked about the meeting that we had. When we were given the information of the consolidation and the standalone station. In those documents, it shows all of the numbers. Um, and now Dan, didn't you tell me, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but wasn't that the December? Um, agenda packet? And so, so if anybody has any questions about financing of how this is going to work out, that's a very good place to start. I, I truly believe that the city of Milton has been very open about everything that we have been doing. And that is a perfect example, and I do want to point out for you, Dan, because you and I also talked about that too. This is a changing document, so I mean, this document's going to change if we go without. The township also.
Well, what you've been doing is you've been following the direction that the fire commission voted on. The fire commission voted to negotiate a consolidation with the city of Jamesville. And so the information that's been presented has been based on that. Direction. Um, it hasn't been based on anything the city of Milton has done outside of that, we've followed the fire commission's recommendation. And so that's, those are the numbers that um, Dan prepared for the fire commission. Um, I wanted to hear from Devon or Ryan. I mean, I want to hear from both of you, but whoever wants to go first.
I don't really have a ton to add, um, Linda and I actually spoke this week, um, or last week regarding um, both of our thoughts and I think she. Summed up everything really well, um, I, I just don't think we have the luxury of waiting any longer, um, I just think we need to push ahead.
Brian? Thanks Devon.
I think the town made a big blunder here. It is, I guess, my first thought, um, I think they blundered pretty badly and they completely skipped out of the right process to go. And they should have talked as a fire commission first before trying to go down a different path. Um, and. Besides that, I think it's. Worth maybe putting a threat, maybe of dissolution to them, but not necessarily immediately jumping on them, give them one more chance to maybe bring it back in. Um, I know there's a fire commission tomorrow and that's a chance to kind of go back at them. And I'm also kind of wondering what kind of havoc it would wreck if we were to go look down the path of dissolution. When we're trying to also consolidate at the same time. I actually think that might cause even more problems trying to break things apart as you're trying to build a new bridges and stuff like that. And I think we need to not, I know we don't necessarily want to, we, we need to kind of be quick about this, but I don't think we need to make a jump decision right now. Whenever it's, you know, the ten, the tempers are potentially high, I think we need to be very, very careful in how we proceed.
Right, so if the town of Ed, if the town of Milton goes with Edgerton. We have to dissolve.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about is they didn't have, they haven't said they're specifically going with Edgerton, from what I've understood. They said that they are looking into, what if we were to go with Edgerton, what if, what are these other options? It sounds like Harmony has approached them about some, maybe some other option as well. They haven't said they're going that route, they're just saying, they're saying, let's look at these options is what I gather. So based on that, I think that we just need to proceed carefully, not necessarily immediately say, oh, well, we're backing out of this because. Of uh, backing away from you guys because you're going with Edgerton, when there's, it sounds like they're just weighing options is how I kind of gather it.
Yes, they're leveraging two municipalities against each other.
To some extent, I can see that, I see that too, I just think that we need to be careful but not just immediately jump on a quick decision, uh, quick reaction to that attempt to leverage. I think we can come up with a better, with a good response instead of immediately looking down the path of dissolution. It's just.
You're still gonna have a fire commission that's gonna be three to three on most issues. If you.
I do think it can be problematic because you're right, uh, I mean, they were right to not buy an ambulance. Right, it is, Larry, I agree, it's difficult to really to make any decisions on anything.
I know.
It, you know, kind of puts everything on hold, I guess, for, for some things.
Yeah.
But you have a fire commission meeting tomorrow and we meet again in two weeks. So if you guys were to see what happens, I'm kind of curious to see what happens out of the fire commission meeting tomorrow. And then we can bring this back up again as a topic of discussion in two weeks and make a more informed decision from there. Is what I guess I'm getting at.
Yep. Al, or Bill, go ahead.
The one thing that I would say is we've got precious little time here. Uh, if in fact, we're thinking at all that we're going to go to referendum. Under the circumstances that we've got right now, the referendum's gonna go down. Uh, you know, it, it, it would be a failure. Uh, and so the air has got to be cleared in terms of uh, at a date not too far in the future. Um, you know, here's the referendum and we've got both the town and city behind it or um. The referendum is shot, um, the other option of course is uh, a referendum that is dealing with just the city. Uh, and Jamesville uh, going in that direction, so uh, I, you know, I uh. Maybe cut a little slack, but not very much, we don't have, we, we don't have a lot of time.
I, I would throw in, if you mentioned referendum, that having a dispute in the middle of this attempt to join. Is just gonna make the referendum even harder to pass. Um, so we need to be careful and decisive is kind of what I'm getting at. We don't want to rush into a, uh, into a quick snap decision because I think in the end, that was the area where we'll see the, the, the blowback is in the referendum. So we ne- need to not necessarily draw this into a nasty fight because that means we're gonna fail the refer. Cause.
Well, I don't think it, nothing happened, nothing has to be nasty at all. If the, the town decides to go with Edgerton and we go with the city of Jamesville, we have to dissolve the intergovernmental agreement and we have to divide up the assets, period. That's how it's going to go, unless I'm totally wrong, like I don't see any other way. I mean, Mark, go ahead and tell me, it doesn't have to be dissolved, I think it does.
Yes, it would need to be dissolved because it doesn't work regardless of, well, there's various. Scenarios that can occur and I don't know that, and it'd be appropriate for me to discuss them now, but. The intergovernmental agreement at a minimum as it stands right now would not be able to go forward.
I get the fact that we would have to dissolve if they were to go to Edgerton and we were to go to Jamesville, just saying we don't necessarily need to jump that gun immediately.
No, no, we certainly don't, but I think we have to be really transparent about it, that if we, if, if. The town goes with Edgerton and we go with the city of Jamesville, it has to be dissolved and it'll, it'll be dissolving. You know. As we're negotiating with Jamesville, I think if our, if our date is January first, two thousand and twenty-two. I think some of those processes might be happening simultaneously.
Well, could you, if, if there needs to be some action on this, could we maybe have some type of action in the sense that we say that if. The township decides they're going to go a different route, we are gonna stick with the pa- uh, path forward of going to Jamesville. Not necessarily, I don't think necessarily needs a vote or just some type of a, just a kind of a statement in a way that we are committed to this merger with Jamesville and we're not. Going to go down the path of looking at another option that township is suggesting. And then that can be brought towards the fire commission tomorrow. Is that something that might need to be done?
Yeah, I mean, it's listed as discussion and possible actions, so.
I'm just wondering if we have like a, a, a statement that we agreed, that we, assuming we all agree that we all want to be in it for Jamesville or to merge with Jamesville. And not necessarily go down that other path, then that gives you the uh, fire commission members. A thing they can take the fire commission saying, we're solid, we're set on this path and in a way, it's kind of a. Little more forceful response.
Um, Al, do you have any comments or anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, I, similar to, similarly to what everybody else has said, I certainly agree with what everybody said and I have. Purposely kind of remained out of this conversation because it really hasn't uh, pertained. Uh, to my role as the city administrator, the fire commission is a separate entity. Uh, that I don't have any authority over or, or an, anything of that nature, so I've kind of remained silent, but. I think the action that was taken last week by the town um, does change the dynamic. Uh, I agree with a lot of what has been said, um, the town has every right to negotiate with any entity that they want. Um, they have the right to talk to Edgerton, um, they have the right to have a closed session meeting with Harmony. Um, why it was in closed session, I'm not, I don't know, but again, that's not my, that's not my role. Um, but you know, I am deeply concerned about how this all went down. Um, you know, Ryan and Devon haven't been involved in the conversations, but you know, Theresa even went further back than even what I was thinking. I mean, these conversations have been going on for months. And I think about last summer, after Dan had proposed or prepared the information that he shared with the, with the fire commission. Um, that was in my mind at the first time we really saw that there was not. Uh, the same level of commitment from the town that we have at the city as there was this hybrid model. That kind of magically appeared and was being discussed without the fire commission's knowledge. Um, if, if folks can remember that, that was last summer. And then in December, um, you know, when, when Chief Rhodes and Brian Meyer and, and Anisa had met on several occasions and, and. Um, Chief Rhodes had prepared some information and asked, um, asked if there was any questions and to prepare questions for him. To, to address prior to that meeting or at that meeting. And the town levied no questions to Chief Rhodes, but then that night at the fire commission meeting. Raised all sorts of questions that were very uh, uh, pertinent and powerful questions. That they chose to wait until that minute to raise those questions about ownership of equipment, despite the fact that there had been several conversations before that. And Chief Rhodes had specifically asked for questions in advance in that meeting, they chose not to. Then when the vote was taken, it was a four-two vote. And remember that vote was only a vote to have a conversation. That was the only purpose of that vote, go back and check the tape. It was only to discuss with Jamesville and two commission members from the town voted no to even have a conversation. Then in January, they talked about Edgerton and in February, they talked about Edgerton again. Then all of a sudden in March, a press release comes out of nowhere with no knowledge to anybody on the fire commission or the council. And now there's closed session meetings with surrounding townships. Again, every single one of those things, they have the absolute right to do. But I think the questions that were asked at the last fire commission meeting specifically by Theresa Roche and Bill Wilson. About what's your level of sincerity, are we, are you, are you really committed to this? Um, I, I, I think those are, those are serious questions that, uh, that we need to consider. But at the end of the day, I, I agree with, you know, what Linda said. At the end of the day, the citizens of the city of Milton elected the seven of you to represent them and that's, that's what we need to do. And our three commission members voted to have that conversation and they were in the majority of the fire commission. And I think we continue to have those conversations with Jamesville. However, the town has changed the dynamic. Because if they are going to negotiate with Edgerton, which they have a right to do, that by default puts us in the position. Where we need to prepare for a life without the town. Because you, as Bill said, you can't have it both ways. And although their motivations may be sincere and they may be about service levels and finding the cheapest alternative. They put us in a position where we have to have fire and EMS service in the city of Milton. And if we can't count on the town to be a part of this. We still need to have those conversations and we still should move forward with those conversations with Jamesville. And if that, that means that that consolidation is just a city of Jamesville, city of Milton consolidation, then that's what it is. But the key piece to this equation, at least in my opinion, is what Bill just said, time is of the essence. We can't concurrently prepare for two completely different referendums.
No.
And not have any, any real glimmer of hope of passing either of them. We have to prepare for one referendum. And if, if that referendum is full consolidation of all the townships in Jamesville, then that statement needs to be made. Really, really soon from the town. You can't have it both ways, it can't, it can't go on any longer like this. It can't go on with stall tactic after stall tactic after stall tactic while we are trying. to better the service for our citizens. So if the town is on board with consolidation as they say they are in the newspaper, but then their actions don't match that up at all with how they vote and how they conduct their business, we have to say, okay, you guys have the right to do that, but we need to do what's best for us. We can't prepare for two referendums at the same time. So we have to prepare for a full consolidation or just a go it alone consolidation. Either that or we scrap the whole thing and look at creating our own city of Milton fire department, which that's going to take a referendum too. Or we say, you know what, let's stop the presses on everything and just carry on as usual. But we've already discussed both at the city and the town level that that's not sustainable. So that really leaves us, you know, with, with one option, at least in my opinion, and that's to carry on with Janesville, have our conversations. If the town wants to reengage with the city of Janesville, they have the right to do that. But I don't think we can wait for them to figure out what's going on with their closed session meetings and their press releases and whatever else they want to do over the next couple of weeks. I, I, we can't, we can't wait, uh, not in good conscience, at least in my mind. And, and Janesville, I can't imagine is going to wait much longer either. I mean, it's, it's beyond amateur hour at this point and it, it's, I, I don't know what else to do. But we, we've got to move forward. We, and, 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 and I agree with Bill so much. A lot of this other stuff is frustrating and it's infuriating and it seems incredibly insincere. But it's just noise. It's just noise when it all comes down to what we're really trying to accomplish. And that's creating a sustainable fire department that can be staffed at appropriate levels for a community of our size. And then finding the most equitable way for our taxpayers to deliver that service. And time is of the essence. You know, we had once talked about having referendum language in place by Memorial Day. Now, that's a tight window.
Remember when you guys were talking about having a referendum in April?
Yeah.
And not to make light of it, but look where we'd be at. Look what would have happened if we would, if this, if we would have been going to referendum in April.
Mike, I think that the community is looking for our leadership. I, I've talked to a few people. I don't, I honestly have a positive outlook on the referendum uh, from the people I've talked to. They recognize that the need is there. They know they'll be paying for a department one way or the other. And what they're saying to me is have some leadership, step forward, get this thing going. Because that's what they worry about. That's what I worry about. I want to know that we have adequate service, staffed service, and that we provide it, as Al said so well, in an equitable fashion to all the taxpayers, all the people in the district, if you will. And that's so important. I, I honestly think people will support the referendum. What they won't support is this dancing around the maypole, which is what we've been doing.
And I think what, what folks I think what folks need to remember too is that neither we nor the town owns anything.
Right.
Um, so if, if we wait, if we wait for the town to figure out, is it going to work with Edgerton? Are they going to talk to Edgerton? Have they already been talking to Edgerton, which we've heard they have been? At some point, if they make a decision, yep, okay, we're going to go with Edgerton. And you know, how long are we willing to wait for that? Because as soon as they make that decision, there's nothing left.
I know.
There's no equip, we, we don't have a plan B at that point. We, we don't, we can't, uh, you know, we can't just fire up our own fire department with half an ambulance, half a building and half, half a staff and half, half a fire engine. So we need to be prepared for, uh, uh, you know, a realistic option and, and at, at this point, we're put in the position where I think the only real option is to con- is to, is to start substantive conversations with Janesville about consolidating alone. And if others want to join us, Harmony, Lima, Johnstown, um, the, the town of Milton, they, they certainly can. Um, but I think that those are conversations between the city of Janesville and those entities. Now, because h- how do we wait? Again, we have to, we have to come up with a referendum, we have to explain it to the people, and then we have to pass it. And, and if we're trying to put together one referendum, if Harmony joins us and one referendum, if Milton joins us and one referendum, if Lima, you know, it, it's just, it's not going to work. And we're the only one of those entities that actually has to pass a referendum. The rest of them can just do it at a town board meeting.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so.
I, I really think that our best chance of having a referendum passed is a simple city of Milton, city of Janesville consolidation. That's going to be the easiest thing to explain. It's going to have the least cross current in terms of, of uh, uh, you know, it doesn't matter at that point if somebody in the town thinks that's a bad idea. Uh, it really is a conversation that we can have with the citizens of Milton, of the residents of Milton and, and um, uh, it's a clean referendum as opposed to kind of the really messy one that Al is describing.
Oh, Bill, kind of add to that, I guess. Um, even if the town decides to go with a referendum or go, go with the consolidation of Janesville, you still end up in the same place. Where he, as a whole, if town decides to go with Janesville, we're all consolidated into Janesville and separate, you know, it's going to be the same position. So whether we can do it together or we do it by ourselves in a way, so. Does that make sense? It's just a matter of who's negotiating. And if we guess, if we do it our own, then we kind of control our own destiny rather than having to deal with somebody else trying to control their destiny too. But in the end, if they decide they want to consolidate with Janesville too, we all end up in the same place wherever it's, it's all due to Janesville.
Right. It's kind of like what the fire commission already does with the towns that they contract with. It's not a situation where the town of Lima, the town of Johnstown, the town of Koshkano all get together and come up with some kind of package deal for this, for the Milton, town of Milton Fire Department. They negotiate with the fire district, if you want to call it that, the fire department themselves. And like, much like Koshkano did this year, they, they changed the scope of their service area. Um, so if Milton negotiates with Janesville and enters into a consolidation agreement, those other entities can come in. But in my opinion, at that point, it's, it's, it's them initiating the conversations with Janesville and them coming to terms with Janesville.
And we're out of that conversation entirely.
Right, because
And we know in the referendum how much it's going to cost because they're not the questions about contracting townships and, and that kind of thing getting involved.
We literally control our own destiny rather than having us control people's destiny or them having some sway on our destiny.
Right.
This is a really big decision that we're making here and it's a very historical decision. I can tell you that there's been eight fires, eight studies in our fire department throughout the years. We have to, we've got to be thinking ahead and, and we also have to think about what our call volumes are. You know, five years ago, fifty calls was fifty calls. Now we're going to a hundred calls. These, this is serious. We've got expansions going on. And I, I, I actually feel very confident about the information that I'm getting from Dan and the other finance director and chief Rhodes about how they are coming out with these numbers. And I'm very confident that in a consolidation with Janesville and just us, that they will be able to, um, they'll be looking out for us. We have some good people here.
And they will also have to consider if, if it is just uh, the city of Milton and Janesville, if other areas, other townships like Harmony and Johnstown and so forth, uh, decide to go the, with the other end of it, how will we then look at providing those services through the concept of Mavis? Um, it won't be that simple beyond now. Uh, it's, you have too large of an area to look at it from that concept.
That's true.
It, 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 it is very true. And those townships will have to understand that. Uh, it can't be uh, conveyed to them that you'll just be covered. You know, it needs to be spelled out upfront.
I think so too. Because the townships can't take advantage of the goodwill of um, Mavis or um, you know, automatic aid. Because then all the towns will pay really cheap fire service to Edgerton and the cities will be subsidizing it by fighting all their fires for them because their response time is too long to get all the way across the county.
Right. And you know, Milton and the north side of Janesville will just be eaten alive by those services. They couldn't possibly do it without extra funding.
Yeah, I'm sure that all of those, those agreements and the agreement to whoever's closest provides a service might have to end up being relooked at.
Yeah. Well, it, it kind of is though, because if you, you, if our people are out and there's a nine-one-one call, when it, as it goes through the system, the card system, if an, if a department is not available, it goes to the next department. So I, I believe that probably a lot of people just don't understand what this card system is, is that, you know, it's, yeah, it, you still do have nine-one-one, but there may not be an ambulance available right there. And so somebody else might down the line, um, Evansville or Stoughton or Beloit, uh, maybe somebody else down the line will get that call and you know, I'm, I'm really sad that, that we've got another round of confusion.
I think if, there doesn't, it certainly has to be confusion with the city of Milton. If you're giving clear direction of how you want to move forward, then there is no confusion, right? There, there might be uncertainty with the town of Milton and the other townships, but if you give clear direction, then the city of Milton knows exactly what to expect.
Yes.
That's my
And I think that's what they're asking for. I think that's what the residents want. Um, and I've been trying to convey that in my statements that we haven't changed our course. We're going to go with a consolidated, consolidation with Janesville because we absolutely have to have a full-time fire and paramedic service. Like, we, we've gone through probably twenty-five different staffing models just in the time that I've been here and paid on premise, paid on call, part-time does not, it just does not work, but it just doesn't not work for us. It doesn't work for anybody in the state of Wisconsin mostly and across the whole country. Like those of you that sat in on that Zoom training that was offered, heard that. So we're, we're just trying to keep up with a changing environment of fire prevention service paramedics that, that we exist in. So is there anything else for anybody or?
I, I do like Ryan's idea of a statement uh, that comes out of this meeting that says, um, uh, you know, under these conditions, city of Milton intends to negotiate unilaterally with Janesville.
And I was in, and Bill that, you know, I think we need to put forth some type of statement as a, in a way, a, a threat for tomorrow's meeting to be delivered, that our, you know, statement may be along the lines of, um, you're with us on this, um, consolidation with Janesville or you're on your own with this and we'll do it ourselves. Maybe something along those lines. And then maybe at our next city council meeting, um, depending on how that goes at the fire commission meeting tomorrow, uh, our next city council meeting, we can look at what efforts we need to be go, we would need to go forward with, um, doing it on our own. So I don't know if there's some information we would need to gather to be able make that determination as a whole. I don't know if we'd be able to figure out what it might cost us, not necessarily financially, but just in general to go ahead and start looking down that path. But it, it, you know, it provides a little bit of a threat and shows them that we're serious about this. We're not going to put up with this anymore. It's time to move forward. And that allows us also to keep that, that momentum going, so we don't stall and go too slow. So basically, we give them tweets in a way by telling them tomorrow, this is what we're, this is how we're proceeding. You're with us or you're on your own. Something along those lines. I don't know if that needs to be, if that's something we all need to have a vote on or how we would need to state that exactly, but that's kind of my thoughts. Bill, you tend to be a good wordsmith here, so.
Mark, do you have any comment on this? Mark asked.
So I understand then you're looking to basically pass a resolution reaffirming the intent of the city of Milton to continue with negotiations with the city of Janesville for consolidation of the two fire departments, correct? So, um, you can, I, I think it would be appropriate, well, it would be appropriate for you then that resolution is something that you would just vote on here as a, as a council. So you'd have your motion as second and vote as to whether or not uh, you would approve that resolution. Again, that, that's a statement of your intent. And it doesn't otherwise bind you in any particular course, but that's, that's, that's stating your intent and that's appropriate if you want to do that.
My, my only question about that, sorry, I'm getting some feedback, um, is, i- is the delivering of it at the fire commission meeting tomorrow, um, it's not on the agenda. In fact, the only thing on the agenda is a closed session discussion. Um, so unless we could deliver that in, under general items, I'm not sure how we would make that statement. That, that's my, I'm just trying to think, think it through procedurally.
I, I was just trying to use that as an example of trying to do it with the fire commission, although if it's just a blank thing, or you know what? We could just do it in a press release too. If you want to go the route, fight fire with fire, give it as a press release. But I don't think that's a good idea. I think that just creates an even bigger can of worms. But I think having, you know, creating that resolution might be a good idea. Maybe the fire commission, it's too soon, or it's too quick to be able to do it at that commission meeting. But if there's a way that we could pass that resolution on to them, I'd be willing to make that as a resolution or as a motion.
Well, I think you can, you can make a resolution and you can have a second, you can vote on it. It's, it's still a public statement, right? This is a, a public meeting. You're still making a statement of your intention. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the form of a press release, but I'm sure there's going to be questions that are asked at the fire commission meeting about, you know, possibly what the thoughts or the feedback is on, on the city of Milton, if you can even go forward with a fire commission meeting, right?
Wouldn't be something that would be voted on by the fire commission because it would end up three-three anyway.
Right.
Well, and I don't think we'd be asking the fire commission to vote on, yeah, you're right, yeah.
It's a statement.
There is an, on the agenda, there is a public comments section. And since I'm an alternate on the fire commission and all three of our people will be there, I'm not an alternate that night, so I'd be more than glad in the public comments section to read that resolution.
Then can I make the motion to basically of what, the way Mark spelled it out?
So that's a statement reaffirming the intent of the city of Milton to negotiate with the city of Janesville on the consolidation of the two fire departments. Is that correct?
A resolution.
Do we want to add the word unilaterally? Because I mean, that seems to be the intent of what I'm, folks, of, of, what I hear folks saying is that we, we intend to continue negotiations with the city of Janesville, but we intend for those negotiations to now be unilateral. Um, as, as for all the reasons we described. Again, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. I certainly don't want to be, um, sensationalize it, but I think that piece is
I, I, I in fact would say commence unilateral discussions with Janesville. You know, we have not, as a city, had those
Correct.
Uh, negotiations. It's been on behalf of the fire commission at this point. And so we would be commencing unilateral negotiations with the city of Janesville on consolidation of fire services.
Let's still give the township a way to get back into it if they decide that they've gone the wrong path and want to stay on board.
Again, I I would go back to my previous comments. They have the right to negotiate with whoever they want. They didn't ask our permission to negotiate with Edgerton. They don't need to ask our permission to negotiate with Janesville.
Yeah, we're just telling them.
And so it might be fire and EMS or fire and paramedic, like I wouldn't want it to just be fire.
Um.
You got that, Inga? Can you just repeat it back real quick, really fast?
One second, just wait. Okay, so just to confirm, this is a motion to approve a resolution? Is that part correct?
Right.
Well, well, the motion is the resolution, so you don't need to state that, but it so it's a motion. To uh state the intent of the city of Janes, uh city of Milton. To, as I understand now, to en- engage in unilateral negotiations with. The uh city of Janesville regarding the consolidation of the. Two fire departments and EMS services. Is that what you wanted to add, Mayor?
Yes, if it's EMS or paramedic, what is that? Paramedic or EMS?
Paramedic.
Is paramedic, okay.
So I have motion to state the intent of the city of Milton to engage in unilateral negotiations with the city of Janes- Janesville. Regarding the consolidation of the two fire EMS paramedic departments.
Fire and paramedic.
And I'll agree with that for my motion.
That's your motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Inga, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Yeah, if if I could, if if you if you if I could make just one additional statement, because I I realize that the media is not here. And I realize that the town is not here, but I would imagine folks will watch this after the fact. And I and I've had conversations with many of you and and I know we all agree that the town. That the town can talk to Edgerton, they can shoot, they could talk to Evansville or or Jefferson or Fort Atkinson if they want to. They didn't do anything wrong. They have the right to represent their people in the same way that we have the right to represent our people. The problem is is that it's. Puts us in a very difficult position because the unknown became even greater. And and we don't have time to kind of wait to see how that all plays out. That's what the challenge is, at least I see it at this point.
Well, it's not an unknown now. We know what we're doing.
I just would add that I think. They yes, they can go and do that, but the mist, the problem is they didn't necessarily go through the commission to do that. And that's the true problem here is we are in partnership and they completely left out of that partnership to do that, even though, yes, it's within their right. But it's not the right thing to do, right, or right way to do it. And that's the true problem here. It's not they they had the rights to it, but it's not the right way to do it.
Correct.
And that was my comment earlier about the commission in a sense being gutted. At this point.
Well, we've both publicly indicated the direction we're going in. So is there anything else?
Are you going to release that or how are you going to do that?
I don't think we need to release anything or to do a press release or anything. I think if you want to mention that in public comments tomorrow, that's fine. At the press.
I don't want to do it if you don't want me to.
Oh, no, I think it's perfectly fine. I think I think we should be upfront and transparent with them and set. Example of how you are upfront and transparent with somebody that you're in a partnership with.
Yeah, this is, this is a public meeting that's being recorded. We discussed this publicly, open to the transparency, open and transparently. Anybody who wanted to join this meeting could join, could have joined this meeting. Anybody who wants to watch it afterwards could watch it afterwards. I I certainly understand, um, I think Ryan's question about how do we get the word out? I think that's a really good question, and I'm not sure what the answer is to that. But I think the key is is that we had this discussion in a public meeting. And we came to this decision in a public meeting and had this conversation publicly. Therein lies the huge difference.
Yeah, I agree.
So I I don't, I don't know how to answer the question about how do we get the word out. I think, you know, uh, you know, perhaps, Anissa, if you want to have. Conversations with commission members, you know, I I it's it's a great question.
I have a thought out to that, actually. Um, if Inga can get the exact wording to Larry. I think Larry reading in the public comments, the fire commission might be enough. And just read the exact words, don't elaborate up beyond it, maybe just read those words and that's it. Um, as I say, do it, mic drop. Um, but. Anyways, just read the words, I think is enough because I suspect the fire commission is going to have members of the media pay attention to it tomorrow. That's what I suspect because now it's all over the news. They're going to try to sit in, see what they hear in different things. I could be wrong. And that might just be all we need, and it's then it's not trying to go big grandstanding type of thing. It's just as simple, we're letting them know.
Something to plan for me.
And I think just as it, it may be just a simple stick with the exact wording of the motion and that's it. I'll be the simplest way.
I'll let Ingle know.
Oh, yeah, I I figured you would kind of talk to let Janesville know behind scenes as, you know, normal communications would go. You also probably let the chief know as well.
Yeah.
But I'm probably as far as communicate like in town and stuff like that, and maybe that's the. At the fire commission or to the public, that's kind of the way you do it, I think.
Yes, because normally, um, well, since COVID began, the fire commission has actually been doing Zoom meetings. Um, our meeting tomorrow night is um. Some meeting, and so they all, you can also do a teleconference. To do that, to hear the meeting, just in case anybody would like to hear it. Um, one of my disappointments, and I'm I am going to say this. Um, one of my disappointments is that we had a system going. Where we were using Zoom, our meetings are public, people have can go and look at anything and everything, every comment or. Hair out of place. And this meeting, we're going to be making some important decisions and it's not going to be televised, it's not going to be on Zoom. Um, so.
It's not going to be recorded on Zoom.
Right.
Or for YouTube.
Right, so I'm a little disappointed with that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this particular meeting, for some reason, is a phone conversation. Meaning a phone or in person.
Yep. Do you get an agenda with a phone number called? Did the commission get that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right.
And just just quick, I did send out a meeting invite for the joint fire commission meeting tomorrow to the joint fire commission members. With the Zoom link information in it, I'm going to remove that calendar invite. So if you want to make a new one for yourselves, just so then we won't get confused about having a Zoom link out there that's not actually going to be used.
Okay, Inga?
Yep.
Would you send me the exact wording?
Yep, I'll I'll send it to all of the council members, so everyone has it just in case you want to reference it.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Okay, do you guys feel good about uh going on to general items? Any last comments or anything?
I just want everybody to know that this has taken up a lot of time, not only for the city council, but for the town board and the fire commission. And this has been ongoing for several years. So in some cases, you're talking about several different fire commissions. Um, and the the goal has always been. Economic and safe. Safe not only for our citizens, those people who are getting the calls, but also for our department people. Um, and that's what, you know, these are, this is the solution to to the problems that we've had throughout the years. And maybe, you know. It is going to be different. There is not, I we're still in negotiations as Anissa has pointed out. Um, right now. Incorporating um consolidating with Janesville, we will. The fire commission will be a citizen group as opposed to an elected official group. That's a di- that's a different structure of a commission. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, but service to the community is the priority here, and I think that's the case for everyone.
Okay, thanks. Anything for anyone else? All right, um, committee reports. Who wants to go first?
Ashley, do you want to go through a Story Gardens report with me?
Sure.
Try to remember everything. Um, there's a number of fundraising initiatives that the subcommittee is taking on. Um, one of the ones we're going to be starting on March twenty second and going through mid April is an online merchandise store. So be sure to grab some Story Garden swag to help support our project. Um, what else was there, Ashley?
Yeah, so we have um some greeting cards that are right now available for purchase. They were designed by Angie. Who works at the library. There's five different designs, and we are going to have a design contest in April to have one of our younger patrons. Um, design one of those cards, so we're excited for that. And then the elementary schools in the north side are going to do a penny wars for our pathway. So that'll be pretty exciting. And.
And there's going to be a jar at the library too, right, Ashley?
Yeah, there will be a jar at the library as well.
So all of us can bring our penny.
Yes, clean out your change and your pockets and the couch. And um support our Story Gardens, and then Inga and I are working on a couple grants. We got some grants coming up due in April. Um, and we discussed our gazebo as well.
And we're looking at doing a full presentation for the council on the Story Gardens project at the April twentieth meeting. We're hoping to have an updated site plan and rendering by then, so fingers crossed we can get that accomplished. Um, I think that's it.
That was a nice segue into library stuff. Any other committee meetings?
The planning commission held a four minute meeting today.
Yeah. It was a little longer because I had trouble getting my motion together.
I I mean, it could have been three.
I know.
But at at that meeting, they approved three lots CSM that uh. Separates the existing home on the former Lipkey property because that home is going to be sold uh to somebody who wants to renovate it and live in it, so. That item was also on the consent agenda on tonight's council meeting, so, so you know.
Okay, we'll move on to staff reports. Howie?
Um, we're we're mostly going to be working on um hiring our new employees for the next month. And then just hopefully the snow might hopefully be done, so we'll just keep sweeping the streets and get ready for spring with different projects.
Dan?
I know there's been a lot of talk then in Janesville about um the stimulus money that's coming to the municipalities. We've, I've seen Alan, I have seen one document that has a preliminary amount for what um. The city of Milton might receive, like we haven't seen anything formally. And there hasn't been any guidance yet from the treasury. Oh, it's a lot of specifics as to what the money might be able to be used for. But it appears that we're looking at um right around a half a million dollars of uh. Stimulus money that can be spent on projects that are still to be determined because the guidance isn't out there. But we are looking into that as that information becomes more available.
Yeah, the preliminary guidance is 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 very narrow in scope. Um, so but but even that, we don't know the specifics. The preliminary guidance basically says it can be used for loss of revenue, hazard pay. Or uh projects related to sewer or water. Um, so.
Or internet.
Or internet and broadband. Yes, yes, that's right. So um what's not in there is roads or buildings or consolidating a fire department, for example. Um, you know, so I just didn't want anybody to get excited about that. But uh, so yeah, so we're, you know, we're we're looking at what does that mean? Can the improvements be accessible? Can the improvements, do they have to be new improvements? Can they be maintenance? Um, would the water tower project, for example, be an o- opportunity to utilize some of those dollars? Uh, so those are the things that we just don't know yet, but um certainly was a a nice surprise to get that 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 information. Um, and and, you know, we'll find a good use for it uh that hopefully benefits everybody in the community. That's the goal.
Replace those lead pipes.
Right. We already got a grade for that, so.
Not all of them, though.
Yeah.
I have some ideas. I'm sure the council has ideas on how to spend money. Solar panels, sustainability.
Yeah.
Electric car charging stations.
Tree.
Chief of police. No, no, you're not getting a car. You're not getting another car. Don't think about spending that money on a car.
Or a horse.
God, if I were you, I'd go for an electric car.
You just, you just took away one of my updates. I better not talk about the new cars we just got delivered. That was going to be one of my updates. Um, and the other that has come before you for consideration late last year and um this year was our new body camera program. Um, we've gotten the equipment and had a trainer from Axon on premise last week. And we're all trained up. We're waiting for some extra equipment to arrive and then we'll be deploying the new cameras. That's all I got.
Exciting. Mark, Mark E., Mark.
Um, the twenty twenty one street utility improvements project that's cottonwood and blanch, will be going up to bid here in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, the water tower design will get going here, looking at the sewer lining project, some other miscellaneous projects ongoing at the treatment plant. About it, I guess.
Ashley, anything else for the library?
No, just concentrating on the Story Gardens, and it's been delightful to be open again. Seeing lots of people we haven't seen in a very long time. It's been very nice.
Al, anything?
I'm not, you know, obviously, we we talked a lot about what's kind of been consuming a lot of our time, but um. Um, I think I've kind of mentioned it a couple of times. We have a lot of. A preliminary renewed interest in single family development, which is exciting. That's absolutely a need and still in our community and our region. Um, some of those projects are are kind of continuations of old projects and some of them may be new. Um, that we haven't seen yet, so uh there's still some work to be done logistically on how to get those projects moving and. And and how that uh how that will all work out in terms of the utility improvements, but um. It's encouraging to see uh that uh that those types of conversations are back. And hopefully we can get the price of two by fours to a reasonable number, and maybe we'll see those start to get going even faster. We don't have control of that.
Let me ask Al a quick question.
Yep.
Have we heard anything back from the recycling plant?
You know, that's a great question. I see their trucks around town all the time. And no, I haven't heard anything from from those folks in several months. And um we have a lot of interest in the land that we had previously kind of talked to them about, and obviously. You know, all agreements that we had with them are now void. Uh, so uh, yeah, I'm not sure where they're at in their in their process. As far as I know, they're still operating out of that North Janesville site. Yeah, that that land is at a premium, um, so, you know. Good question, though.
All right. You ready for team building?
Sure.
Okay, here it is, and it's a fill in the blank. It's a fill in the blank. I was doing some spring cleaning, cleaning out my junk drawer. And oh my God, you can't believe what I found. So you all have to fill in the blank and tell me what you found. It doesn't even have to be true, but it's fill in the blank.
Money.
Ryan, yours is money? How much?
Thirty-dollar fifty in blue change.
Well, for those folks who were on the call before the meeting started, I was telling everybody that, um, um, we have this odd situation where every third Tuesday, I have these meetings, and my wife has her board meetings, so we've got uh, our aunt and uncle upstairs watching the boys. And before the boys came, or before my aunt, uh, and aunt and uncle came, um, our oldest son said he was gonna get an Easter egg hunt ready for them. So he went around the house and hid a whole bunch of things. The problem is, I don't know what he hid and how many things he hid. So I have a feeling my spring cleaning, I'm gonna find all sorts of things that I didn't even know were lost, uh, as time goes on. Uh, so, yeah, that's gonna be, so, so, uh, maybe I'll report back to you. I don't, I don't know what I'm about to find.
You'll find some money, too.
Might, yeah, it might, it might be socks, it might be plates, it might be the dog's toys, it might be some artwork. I have no idea.
Hopefully, it's not anything food-related.
Oh, yeah, everybody, everybody knows that finding that old milk cup in a toy box after the fact is never fun. Or the string cheese.
I wanna bring the meeting full circle and say Legos.
Thanks, chief.
And Howie?
Found a leprechaun flag that's hanging out on front of the tree.
Good timing. Good timing.
I found a really, and this is true, I did find this, a really old candy bar. I think we moved down here in two thousand and nine to the Milton area. And I'm pretty sure it was quite that old, in, in my junk drawer. Have no idea how it got there, but needless to say, even Diesel, my German shepherd, turned his nose up at.
It's a good way to find out that you don't have mice.
I always seem to find charging cords for things I have no idea what they go to.
I will go with, I haven't found anything yet, because one, spring doesn't really start until Saturday. And I really haven't done any, like, cleaning, cleaning around the house in a while, so.
So it could be anything.
Right. I just don't know what it is, yeah.
A flash drive with some photos that I didn't know that I had.
I found something this afternoon. I was looking for, for something and, uh, found a bunch of, uh, old pictures and slides. Um, things from, uh, my parents and things, you know. Yep, just old pictures that were kind of neat to look at.
My junk drawer is usually just full of instruction manuals for appliances I no longer have. And I just keep them in there.
Just like a librarian, hanging out of those books.
My drunk, my junk drawer, I can honestly tell you, I, I can always find a rubber band that is, like, we, just a strange size, you know, whether it's like a real thick one that's real small or a great big giant one, or, you know, it just amazes me. I have no idea where these things come from. They just show up.
I found the number five candle I was looking for back in September when my daughter turned five. So now I have a number five candle, and hopefully I can find it when my other daughter turns five.
Or add a one when she turns fifteen.
Perfect. We'll, we'll keep it that long.
Works okay for fifty, too.
Yeah.
Is, is it just the marks?
The marks, yep.
It's a standoff.
Neither one wants to blink again.
Okay, I'll go. It would be a can koozie.
I suppose you probably wouldn't believe it, but I found my lost innocence.
God, for sure you would say eight-track or something like that, or Beta, Beta Max or something.
Uh, TV remote, maybe. Anything the kids left in there? Fourteen pairs of scissors?
Yeah.
Box of crayons.
I'll tell you a funny story, speaking of losing stuff. Um, when my daughter was three, I couldn't find my car keys anywhere, like, any, anywhere, anywhere. It took us hours and hours of looking, and I found them in a twelve-pack of beer sitting by the door.
Wow.
So clearly, she drove me to drink, because I couldn't find my car keys, and then I found. Okay. So. Our next number ten is all Bill.
Hey, Mark, is the citation on there right?
I found it in my junk drawer.
It better be. I sent him all of my citations a few weeks ago, and he said they all worked.
Oh, you received a citation with?
Yeah, we aren't gonna talk about that.
Nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub C. I would, uh,
Okay.
I would move, we, uh, convened in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute, nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, uh, regarding the Administrative Services Director.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Anyone opposed?
Yes, was there a motion to reconvene into open session?
There was.
There was.
I, I made that motion and, uh, Bill seconded.
Ryan made the motion and, and Bill seconded.
Okay.
And it was unanimous to reconvene.
Perfect. Okay.
All right, I will make the motion to authorize Al to negotiate a salary not to, not to exceed an increase of twenty percent effective the next payroll period for the Administrative Service Director.
Devin is seconding that. Perfect. All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Is there anyone opposed?
Well, I bet steam, please.
Okay, Larry abstained. All right, is that it? Next meeting is?
Wednesday, April seventh, because there's an election on April sixth. So it'll be Wednesday, April seventh.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
And Linda seconded. All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned.